I hereby call the full city school committee, let's just have it, city council, sorry. Full school committee for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at being seven o'clock. Let us please stand and salute our American flag.
The flag. The Republican Party stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We do have a very lengthy agenda tonight. I will, first of all, establish a quorum. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Here.
Mr. Minicello?
Here.
Mrs. Mendez?
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
The chair is here. We've established the quorum. Agenda two is the hearing of visitors. We do have a list of visitors. The first to please come up to the podium is Faith Tobon.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Okay. Good evening. My name is Faith Tobon, and I'm a parent of a Brockton High School freshman. In 2016, I met with the principal of Brockton High School, and I told him that Brockton High was in a terrible state, and we needed to make forward progress. In 2017 and 2018, I wrote to the school committee members several times, and I spoke right here, and I said that Brockton High was in a terrible state, and we needed to make forward progress. In 2019, I wrote a letter to the principal and the deans with five pages of state data, probably the same state data that was used in the district review, that proved that Brockton High was in a terrible state, and we needed to make forward progress. In 2020, the state told all of us that Brockton High was in a terrible state, and that we needed to make forward progress. In 2021, I and many parents and colleagues met with the superintendent and the mayor, and testified that Brockton High was in a terrible state, and we needed to make forward progress. And although I greatly applaud the superintendent to having the courage to create something new with the BHS excellence team, that will make change, but it's not enough. And we've had some really productive initial meetings. I'm very excited about the progress of the excellence team. However, during these past five years that I've been speaking up, I've heard the words "all right" a lot. Things like, "It's all right. Don't worry about the small stuff." Things like, "It's all right. The state won't take us over." I've heard that actually several times. I've heard from parents, "Your kid will be all right if he's in honors classes, or in the band, or in sports." When did "all right" become the standard for Brockton kids? Right now, today, no one is even "all right" here. No one is "all right" in this building. It is up to us, the adults, to create the environment where all children thrive. It is up to us, the adults, to create an environment where it is easier for vulnerable kids to make the right choices and not the wrong ones. Instead, we have an environment where it is incredibly difficult to learn, and very few thrive. I ask the parents and teachers who are here tonight, "Is this acceptable? Is this all right? Why do we have to accept less than a thriving environment for our children?" We don't. And we're not going away until we fix this. And what members of the parents group that have been meeting, will be contacting folks in the next couple of weeks, we want more transparency. We want more transparency about the issues up here at Brockton High School. And we know that the state, you have to release at the end of every year to the state, all these behavior numbers that you legally have to release. We're going to ask that these numbers get released earlier, and that they're transparent. Because only when we acknowledge what the problem is, can we work together to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. The next individual that signed in is Janine Porter.
Good evening. I'm a BHS grad, and I loved my time here. Even walking in just now, just felt good, just that feeling. It was just really cool, just a good feeling. You know, I think back, I look at Mike Thomas, I think back of basketball cheerleading. I used to cheerlead the African-American club, all these clubs. I bragged about Brockton High. My college roommates at NYU know all about Brockton High. I defended Brockton High. When kids from Newton North, or Waldham, or wherever would say, "Do you guys carry knives?" and things, very insulting. I defended Brockton High. But I'm here tonight for my boys, my twins. They're in eighth grade, and they want to come to Brockton High. But I feel bad when we have this conversation, because I'm like, "I don't know. I don't know. Let's see what our other choices are." Because of all of the craziness I'm hearing at Brockton High. When I run into former students that are now here, they tell me it's crazy here. So it makes me nervous for my children to come here. But I would love for them to come here. I want to feel good about that. I want to feel confident, like, "Yes, go to Brockton High. I went there. Your uncle went there. Cousins went there." But I don't feel that right now. And they know I feel bad about it. They know I would love for them to go there, but I don't feel it. So what I hope that we can get out of some of these meetings is that feeling that a lot of us had going to Brockton High. That feeling of just pride, Brockton pride. Not feeling it right now. So hopefully, we can come up with some way where my boys can come here. I look forward to some positive change, some progress, because I want them to be BHS alumni as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next individual would be Nancy Tucker, please.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Tucker. I am a teacher here at Brockton High. I am the library media specialist for the whole city at this point. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I've been in the district for 24 years, 18 of those at elementary, and five here at Brockton High School. And I'm here in many areas on behalf of our kids. The kids tell me things, and I feel that you guys need to know. I've dedicated my career to our kids. They need to have their opinions and feelings heard. The current conditions at Brockton High need immediate attention. Our students do not feel safe. Our students do not feel important enough to have a school that doesn't rain on them and has real floors. They see rodents and bugs in a building that is falling apart. Our kids deserve to have a building they feel safe in. They deserve to be coming to school without being concerned of smelling like drugs. They deserve to be able to use the bathroom without fear, waiting, harassment, or walking in on outrageous behaviors. Our kids deserve to come to school with a class full of courses in their schedule, not studies. And our kids deserve to come to school expecting to see their teachers ready, not sitting in a cafeteria because there are no substitutes. Our kids deserve a safe and supportive environment that is conducive to learning, and they don't feel that that's what they're getting. The students are surrounded by many staff members, including myself, that care deeply about them, but our hands are tied in so many situations that we're at a loss for help, and that's why we're speaking up. Members of the staff are beyond frustrated, members of the staff don't feel safe, and many are being pushed to a breaking point. Communication, accountability, follow-through, and discipline are all areas of huge concern. We cannot provide excellent academic instruction if we are in an environment that does not allow for that to happen. More specific to my position, the students do not feel like they have the resources to support them. They see other schools, when they go out for sports and competitions, that have libraries that they can borrow items from, and have a budget to support them. I'm a library media specialist, and literacy is at my core, and I am the only library media specialist in the district. Our elementary school libraries are staffed by paraprofessionals who are expected to move mountains with no training or formal professional guidance in the field. Our middle school libraries are completely shuttered. Our students here at the high school are not being given access to literature, nonfiction texts, information literacy, digital literacy, and digital citizenship. Our students deserve better than constantly hearing, "We do not have the books that they are starving for." Our students do read. They are starving for books. My busiest time of day is before school, when they are here in the library looking to check out books. They want them, and I love this for them. But only a small fraction of the school has access to my space. We have no relevant or recent literature. One library is closed because it's being turned into a guidance suite. Another is closed for meetings very frequently. Our kids deserve to have access to literature of all kinds equally and equitably, regardless of age or building assignment. Our students deserve dedicated, explicit instruction on information literacy, digital literacy, and digital citizenship. Scholarly research should be something that our kids come out of the district knowing how to read and do. If our students are taught to be responsible consumers of information, they will be much more equipped to live in an information-saturated world. These are all things taught with the expertise of a librarian. I'm not saying that instruction in these areas would cure everything, but our kids would be exposed to lessons on these topics, and it could curtail quite a bit of the social media-inspired behaviors of the late. I love this district. I love our kids. I want to do better for them. We have it in us. We've done it before. We need to buckle down, do the work, allocate what's necessary to support our students in all areas, to support them in the focus areas that you've developed. I don't have the answers to solve the issues, but we need to come together as stakeholders and work on this from the root to do better. I believe we can work these miracles for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next hearing of visitor would be Maggie Penny, please.
Good evening. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, Brockton, city of Brockton. My name is Maggie Penny. I am born, raised in Brockton. I am a first-generation college graduate, born to Haitian immigrants who came here. And Brockton is a place that I've seen evolve over decades. And I notice things. I hear things, and I listen to people. As a parent, as a partner, as a wife, as a mother, as a neighbor, and a resident for as long as I've been in this city, the things that I've been privy to in the last seven to 10 years, where it's concerned budget deficits and shortfalls, where it's concerned safety, where it's concerned school community culture, excellence, or lack thereof, inequities, injustices, unfairness, I'm not as proud as I used to be, being a Brockton resident and having three kids that I purposely, my husband and I, pulled out of private Christian schools in order to, you know, utilize what was an excellent school district, as far as I was concerned when we came to decide to pull our kids out and put them into this district. Over the years, yes, there have been some wonderful things I've seen, and noticed and heard from fellow parents and whatnot. Brockton is excellent in the fact that it offers everything: English as a second language, language immersion, special education, gifted and talented education, general education. There's so much that this district has offered. So when I'm hearing from my girls, both of whom attend the school, that they don't feel safe going to the bathroom, and they're girls, they're teenagers, there are times when they need to go to the bathroom, but they will not while they are in this building, because they don't feel safe, then that bothers me. When I drive in and have them with me to drop them off, I see other parents driving, and I know in my heart of hearts why it is that they're driving, because they want to make sure that the kids whom they love and care about, when they drop them off, they can see that they've entered the building, and that they're safe, and they can feel better about leaving them to go and do whatever they need to do. Go to their job, or go back to their other kids that might be home, or a combination of these things. But when I'm dropping off my kids, and at 7:20 a.m., I'm seeing police officers, thankfully that they're here, but seeing police officers chase after, you know, students that are fighting right there on the campus, minutes after I've dropped my kids off, you know, by their Azure Building entrance door, I'm concerned. I'm concerned. I don't feel comfortable, and I don't feel confident, you know? And quite frankly, I pray about it, because I'm like, "What's going to happen to my kids on any given day? What's going to happen to your kids?" Because I don't really only care about my kids, I care about everybody's kids, because that's my wiring. So I would like you, my friends, people I've communicated with and heard from and seen over the years, I would like to hear not only the good things that I've heard, and this isn't the first time I've been to this party, I've been to numerous school committee meetings as a parent stakeholder, virtually and/or in person. I want to know the good that I've heard over the years, but I also need to hear about the bad. I want to know. I don't want to hear about it hearsay. I don't want to find out through social media. I want you, as an institution, as an organization, as a power holder, to provide proactive feedback as to what's been happening, how things were, how things are, how things could be, what the vision is going forward. Because I believe in Brockton, or else I would have pulled my kids out, and I was very, very close to doing so. But that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for accountability. I'm looking for transparency, and updates, communication, in the languages that make up the city of Brockton, not just English. And I would like to have, you know, confidence and reassurance that this is the place that my kids can thrive, even if they're introverted, you know, even if they're not high achievers, even if they're not always in advanced honors, A P, I B classes. I want all of our children to be able to thrive and succeed, because we deserve it. Every child that wears a backpack should have the same level of opportunity and success, every single one, whether or not the people that represent us, who we've elected to represent us, have kids in the district or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Maggie. The last hearing of visitor is Long Boot Chung.
I just want to apologize ahead of time. I'm a bad speaker. I'm not really a good speaker, but bear with me, you'll probably understand a few words. I'm a long-term resident of Brockton. I came here soon after I graduated college. I went to school with your wife. So I've been here for a long time, lot of children, four. They, two of them graduated from Brockton High. You know, they did very well. They had a lot of wonderful time. They were both in band, and, you know... I have two more. My third one is a senior in high school right now, and going through a hard time. So my concern is about the kids' safety at school. It's not safe for the kids. My kids come home crying, distraught. And my kid's doing very well in school, like, school-wise, but emotionally, not so. And I'm scared for all the other kids, not just my kids. Ren is a senior, doing very well in high school, academic-wise, you know, good cluster of friends, but not safe. He's been taunted on the bus, harassed, you know, verbally, but last week, it became physically, you know? And now he can't even take the bus anymore. He came home crying, missed his test, and Ren is like, third in his class, academically doing very well, but now, he's not doing well. He's going, you know, he's in band, but his concentration's not there. So I'm just very, very concerned for my kids and all the kids in Brockton. I don't know what's going on. I have a son who's in middle school. I don't know where to put him. He's supposed to go to high school next year, so with this going on, I'm just very indecisive as to where we go. I've been in Brockton for 26 years, and I want to stay here, want to keep my kids here. I want to be, continue to be a proud Brocktonian. But I'm here to beg for help, our kids' safety, you know? The bathroom, school ground, on the bus. Ren go on the bus, leave school here or at home, there would be space on the bus, on the seat, but they wouldn't let him sit. He has, he's, you know, small, scrawny, tall, big backpack, trombone, which is huge, but yet kids would not let him sit. They would, the bus driver would put a blind eye and not see, and let him sit. And then last week, groups of kids taunting him, bullying him, yanking his hair, and making fun of him the whole time. He came home in tears, and never been on the bus since that day. And also witnessing his very close friend, M, she's like, she was, I don't know if she still is, like, you know, doing very well in school. She's like a valedictorian in school. Walked home, she got attacked with glass bottles, lots of kids. Nobody did anything. And that was just one incident, and she's had multiple incidents so far this year. So this is not safe. And the bathroom, my, you know, Ren would just hole and go home, to go to the bathroom. So it's not safe here. So I beg all those who can do something about our kids' safety, to please, please do something. And that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as the mayor and as chair of the school committee, first of all, I want to thank all of you for coming here tonight and sharing your concerns. And as a dad of three kids, I hear you. I hear you. And I'm not going to speak for Mike Thomas, but he gets it as well, and all these elected officials do. So I can make a pledge just for myself that we will work with you, and anybody, anybody else that has a loved one in BPS, not just at Brockton High, but in BPS as a whole. So again, I just want to thank you for your time, and know that we take these insights and these comments very serious. Thank you all. Any other comments? Mr. Minicello, please.
Because of the serious nature of what's just...
Sorry, Tom.
Because of the serious nature of what's being expressed, I would make a motion to suspend the rules. We don't do that very often. But with regard to hearing of visitors, to me, when we're talking about, you know, the safety of our students and hearing what I'm hearing, I would like to make a motion to my fellow school committee members, suspend the rules on this occasion, so that we can just sort of address a couple of the things that were said, and that we schedule a safety, security, and transportation subcommittee meeting. I think, Joyce, I think you're the chair of that, and we need to do that, I would say, post haste, but...
Second.
So I have to make a motion to suspend the rules with regard to hearing of visitors to be able to speak a little bit about some of the issues that were discussed. Do my fellow school committee members agree with that motion?
Form of a motion by Mr. Minicello, second by Mr. D'Agostino. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It passes unanimously.
Okay.
The floor is yours, Mr. Minicello.
Okay. With regard to the first person that came and spoke about the issues that she has expressed several, on several occasions, the school committee tonight had a finance subcommittee meeting, and many of those issues were discussed previous to this seven o'clock school committee meeting. We are going to have a follow-up finance subcommittee meeting. I believe it's going to be the night of the next school committee meeting, but we will make that public. So what I would like to do is review what we discussed at today's meeting at six o'clock, have some additional time to discuss the finances and the investments in the system in terms of curriculum and resources for students in order to make the system and the kids meet the district review by the state, the criticisms that were made, and also address at that time some of the statements and concerns, legitimate concerns that were expressed by the public with regard to performance, curriculum, preparing our students academically for the future at all levels. That's number one. Number two, with regard to the safety issues, I think we need to, again, have a safety, transportation, subcommittee meeting. I would also say to the public, if you could please watch the previous finance subcommittee meeting of tonight, I think you'll be very interested and very pleased with respect to what we're talking about investing monies in, and we would want your input on that. And last week, we did have a, we did have a meeting with regard to these funds. The public was invited to speak about issues and their concerns, and what they want the money invested in, which was a good night. I wish we had more people speak. The people that spoke were very well-presented. They voiced very specific concerns and very legitimate concerns, and I think the school committee and the district and the administration is responding to those needs and those requests. I would request that the public also review tonight's finance subcommittee meeting, just so that you can see what we're discussing, and it corresponds with the concerns that were made. And with regard to the safety issues, I think we need to discuss that immediately. You know, kids should be, feel safe to go to the bathroom and ride the buses and that sort of thing. Very concerned when I hear that. And I just want to say that the school committee is very open to meeting with parents and people. Like, for instance, we had a meeting last week, and a parent reached out, not even in my ward, you know, voiced some concern, asked me if I'd meet for a cup of coffee. I met this today with them, coincidentally, today, for a cup of coffee for an hour, the person's not even in my ward. We discussed some issues and follow-up, and I think all of us are willing, when a parent or someone, a stakeholder basically says to us, they want to meet, they want to talk about the issues, we always make ourselves available, and I certainly would have a cup of coffee with anyone that wants to talk about certain issues. And if they want to meet in a small group, I'd be happy to meet in a small group, but, you know, grab a cup of coffee, like I, you know, always have been willing to do, and I know my colleagues would do the same, so that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello. Mr. D'Agostino?
Yeah. One of the things, in addition to the safety and security subcommittee, there's a couple of policy things that I think I've, you know, picked up on as well. I mean, I think there's safety, security issues and policy issues, so we'll certainly have a policy subcommittee as well, so that we can address the things that are on that side of it. And also, as Mr. Minicello said, I mean, I just the other day had a sit-down with a couple of folks with some concerns, and again, I'm always willing to do that, you know, so that we can hear your concerns and hear your feedback, and then, you know, address it. So, but I do think some of what was said, and some of what the folks I met with yesterday, I think it was yesterday, you know, brought to the table, you know, were addressed with some of the things that were planning, and that were discussed in our previous meeting. So definitely, you know, there are things coming that should help with some of what was discussed tonight, but that said, you know, there's a lot of things here that I'm obviously not happy hearing, especially the, you know, the bullying stuff, and I'll be quite transparent with you, I was bullied quite a bit when I was a kid, so I understand that, and, you know, I don't like hearing that, because I remember exactly how it felt to be treated like that. And that, to be blunt, as a kid, that sucked. And so, you know, I understand that, you know, that message came loud and clear, and certainly to somebody that as a kid had that experience. So I just want to assure folks that, you know, we'll take the steps to address these concerns, but also, I'm certainly available to anybody. Like I said, I just met with a few people yesterday, and willing to meet with other people as well, as always, you know? So I guess that's all I have to say at this point, you know?
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Any other school committee members have any thoughts or comments at this time? I am humbly going to ask that that subcommittee meeting be called in short order, if we could. Ms. Azak?
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, if we could call that in short order. Um, you know, at the end of the day, our kids have to be safe in school. I also know that, and Mike and I just conversed real quick, we will have a community engagement meeting in the Nelson Auditorium to hear from other parents as well. We'll have, of course, Dr. Murray, uh, who is our great principal here. Uh, we'll have Dr. Zakowitz, who is great in herself, and she was a principal here. Um, but at the end of the day, we're all in this together. So when you drop your kids off, you expect them to have a good academic day, right? You don't have to drive up to the Azure, make sure they can run in and be safe. So we hear you. We're going to address it, and it's a team effort, right? We roll up our sleeves and get the job done together. So again, I just want to thank you. It will be called, uh, and as soon as possible, we're going to have a community forum in the, in the big auditorium. And pack the place, okay?
Mayor, I want to thank everybody well for coming. Um, you know, and I know that the administration's been working. I actually have several students lined up to come see me over the next two weeks for discipline issues to my level, which is a serious level when they get to me. Um, but, you know, it's been a tough transition back. I mean, there's been fights. There's, um, that graphic, I don't know if Jess is still here to put it up, but, you know, the last time these students were in a, um, regular school year, they were in the sixth grade, now they're in the ninth grade, uh, and they've struggled to come back. There's no question about it. Um, I've had an urban superintendent's meeting last week. Um, it's not only happening in all those other high schools with a lot of conflict, a lot of fights, um, but in suburban districts as well. Um, and this is a struggle. I mean, there's no question about it. Um, I was up here last week. I walked around with Dr. Murray for two hours and, you know, there was probably six or seven students that gave me some lip for not going to class on time. So, you know, I, I get it. I mean, I was here for 10 years. Uh, so that has to obviously be addressed, and we'll work with everybody to address that. Um, it is a struggle when we have up to sometimes 30 staff members out and we don't have substitutes. That is an issue, um, because there are more kids wandering the halls and kids sitting in, in cafeterias. So, you know, that's something we have to address as well, is, um, how do we do a better job with attendance and how do we do a better job getting substitutes? Um, that's one. And the reason why, um, Dr. Zakowitz agreed to come back here from Naples is be all around academic achievement and where we've gone, um, from, uh, being one of the leaders in urban districts, um, to one of the lowest. And that's one of the reasons, main reason why Dr. Zakowitz is here. So, um, you know, again, there's a lot of work to do, but, you know, I, everybody's points are valid, absolutely, because it has been a struggle. Um, unfortunately, we've had kids charged with crimes. We've had, um, the fire alarm pulled, and luckily, they've been caught and, you know, but again, there are privacy issues. There's the law that is a lot different than before in 2015, but we aren't going to, I mean, there's different ways you have to handle the nuisance discipline issues, but, you know, you also have to understand that, you know, um, you know, the violence is cannot be tolerated. That's a safety issue and that can be tolerated. But we have to do a better job for our kids, you know. This isn't where we can just throw them out of school because we didn't like the way they were talking to us. There's a lot of work to do for kids around restorative justice. As you know, we suspend at a very high rate. That our, our, our suspensions show that. That's one of the things we were hit on, the district review, is we suspend at a very high rate. Uh, and that obviously doesn't solve all the problems. I mean, you, there are things you have to suspend for, for safety reasons, but there was a lot of behavior issues that you no longer can suspend for. And, uh, but we still have a high suspension rate, and I've been tasked to bring that rate down. But again, that's a tough balance between bringing a suspension rate down and making sure students and staff are, are safe. So, you know, that's something we have to work on, and I'm glad, again, the excellence team is working. Um, we have to continue to do that. But as far as safety and security, I mean, if anybody knows me, I've always been big on safety and security, and we can't allow fighting or violence or those kind of things for the, but we do have to address the other behavior issues, uh, with more of a not suspension like, but those are issues that are, you know, you know, bullying's, that's a safety and security. Students have to be held accountable for bullying, violence, but there's a lot of restorative things we have to do for students that, again, just like the students I saw in the hallway when I asked them to get the class, that basically told me that I can't tell them what to do. So, and I understand if they're telling me that. I can understand what they're telling teachers. So we have a lot of work to do, but it's been a struggle. These kids have gone through a lot. Um, like I said, the last time they were in school in a regular full school year, they were in sixth grade, and now they're in ninth grade. Uh, when they were in the seventh grade, they left school in March. So the last time they had a regular school year, for these ninth graders, they were in the sixth grade. And then the same, if you look at elementary, kindergarten, and first graders have never been in school in a normal year, and now they're in school. So it's not only a struggle at the high school level, it's a struggle at all levels. And, um, you know, we, we, we really have to come together as a community and figure out how we do this together, because whoever, you know, everybody that spoke here, they're right. I mean, there's no, I'm not doubting, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with anything anybody said.
Do you mind giving-
But it's not an easy fix. We have a lot of work to do.
Do you mind giving an update? I mean, this new high school's 51 years old, right? And you and I have been working with the state delegation and Aldo and Troy Clarkson on the city side. We're investing tons and tens and tens of millions of dollars into hundreds of millions of dollars in this building. Do you mind just giving a quick update on who we are?
Yeah, so we should know, we have an application. Dr. Cobb's did a lengthy application for the MSBA School, Mass. School Building Authority for renovation, our new Brockton High School. We get 80% reimbursement. We should know probably between Thanksgiving and Christmas of, um, the results of whether we're welcome into that program. Um, however, that's a long process, so that's why I think when you saw the S R three, there is money we do need to put into Brockton High, um, to, to, you know, immediately, uh, because it's, you know, when you see, by the time they break ground on a new school, uh, they cut the ribbon for a renovated school, it's seven, eight years from now. So I don't want to mislead people to think, once we're accepted by the MSBA, you're going to see a new school in two years. It's just that the process is, especially the school this size, you're talking about a $400 million investment. Um, that's a long haul. Uh, it's got to be a lot of input from the community, the teachers, the, the students, um, you know, elected officials, but we have to do, like, that's the reason why we put a lot of money in S R three in facilities, because a lot of that money has to be spent here, because we know a new school or a renovated school is seven, eight years away, and you can't wait seven years to do some of the repairs that have to be done here.
Thank you.
So you're right, though. There's, there needs to be an investment in the facility.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, Ms. Azak, follow by Mr. Sullivan, please.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, we are going to be discussing this with our safety, transportation, um, subcommittee, but our buses have cameras on them. And if things are happening on the buses, um, we might just need to remind our bus drivers they need to report it. A lot of them do report it to us, but we want your children to be safe on the buses. So, and-
All of ours have it.
Yep.
Our student doesn't.
And the other thing is, is remember, I believe, hopefully I'm correct, but anything past elementary is a privilege to have a bus. Am I correct? We don't have to provide busing for our high school.
For anyone, if, if they don't behave.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a privilege. So-
The law says you have to bus students, but if they don't behave, you can-
So, you know, if we have, we're having issues, then we're going to have to start taking, you know, um, other actions as far as, it's a privilege, and if you can't keep your hands to yourselves, you know, your parents are going to have to find a way for you to get to school. And as far as the bathrooms, until we can get our emergency meeting somewhat, um, scheduled and met, is there anything we can do? Are they, are all the bathrooms open at the high school? I, at one point, I thought they limited them to certain floors.
The second floor, they closed because there is issues with, yeah, fights, so-
Correct. Yeah. So do we have-
The flow and, you know, um-
Temporarily, do we have, like, certain, do we have people monitoring them?
Yeah, I mean, this floor teaches, there's-
That are monitoring them? Okay.
So what we can do, I, I-
Just a little something for the next few days.
We need to have a meeting so we can actually get into the deep dive. But I, I don't think right now is a good-
No, I didn't want to just go through, just, just for the safety for the next few days until we can get a meeting, um, if the, just so the parents can have peace of mind. Um, you know, that, that's the only thing.
Yeah. What I'm saying is any parent, please call Dr. Murray. Um, he'll take any parent's phone call. He'll respond to any parent directly. Um, anybody that reaches out to my office speaks to, but the best person to talk to is Dr. Murray and one of the deans. And again, so they can get the information about someone that's being bullied, so it could be investigated. Um, Mr. Rodriguez gave, got me information. Um, I gave it to the dean, and that same day, the person was found, uh, held accountable. So, you know, if-
Okay.
We need to know, so we can, you know, if they can, Dr. Murray will call anybody. I mean, I, this, it's not the place to go back and forth, um, but we need to have a separate meeting for that. But any parent that wants to call the high school, Dr. Murray would be happy to follow back. Or have one of the deans follow back, so they can report an issue of being bullied, report an issue of fighting.
Okay. No, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. One of the ladies mentioned the, the bathrooms, and I was, I was just wondering if, uh, I don't know which one it was, if they could say what's going on there. Are they, she said that her daughters are afraid to go to the bathroom? Could she get backup?
So there's been fights in the bathrooms, and also there was a TikTok challenge where kids were trying to rip sinks off of the bathroom wall.
I seen that on-
Some have had to be, some bathrooms had to be closed because they ripped sinks down. Um, obviously, you can't have surveillance cameras in sinks, I mean, in, in sinks in bathrooms. Um, so again, some of this had to be addressed where some of the bathrooms had to be locked. There's still plenty of bathrooms at Brockton High. Um, it did help not only the flow, um, of traffic, um, because of, due to COVID as well, but, you know, it's again, addressing things as they come, and as things get under control, they'll open more of the second floor bathrooms.
I was just, I mean, you can't expect a kid to go all day long without going to the bathroom.
Mr. Sullivan, there's like 50 ba-, I mean, there's plenty of bathrooms, or no kids deny going to the bathroom.
No, they're afraid to get in there. Something's going on there.
Right. Well, I, I mean-
I don't know.
Um, again, have them call us, have them call Dr. Murray, and we can address it and-
I mean, could she tell us what it is?
Mr. Sullivan, can you?
I, I don't, I, I mean, with privacy issues, we've got to be very careful about-
I mean, I didn't know if there was a group in there.
I was wondering if you could call a date now, so when people leave here, they know when the next meeting's going to be. If you could call a date tonight, that'd be helpful.
This is, this is going to get out. We can't go back and forth. This is not, this is not the form.
Yeah, I mean, Friday, Monday. Next Tuesday, we got a school committee at seven o'clock. Do the-
No, there's nothing next Tuesday. We'd have to have the meeting next Tuesday. We could have the meeting next Tuesday.
Want to call, Judy, does that work for you? Tom, does that work for you? Mark, does that work for you?
Tuesday at 12.
Saturday, that work for you? Tony?
Yep.
Joyce?
Tuesday at 12.
Tuesday the 12th? What time, Mr. Sullivan?
Six o'clock.
Six PM, okay. Off, we got to take it on a motion. Make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we have a safety, security, transportation meeting on the 12th of October, six o'clock at PHA.
Second on that? Second. Motion made by Mr. Sullivan, properly second by Mrs. Sullivan. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mark, you going to vote on this?
I'm sorry.
Please raise your hand if you're in favor of that, next Tuesday, six?
Yes.
All opposed, that motion carries. So that's duly noted and it will be noticed.
Okay.
And again, anybody here that, again, didn't speak, wanted to speak, feel free to email us, so we have everything on the agenda for next Tuesday night. Um, and then anybody else that has any detailed questions about the operation of bathrooms, discipline in bathrooms, any of bullying issues, please call Dr. Murray at the high school, 580-7633, 76, 58, 508-580-7633, and let us know how we can address it immediately. But, you know.
Thank you.
But it's hard to go back and forth on specific, because you've got to be very careful about not identifying students when you're dealing with discipline issues, because it's a public forum. We have to be very careful about talking about isolated situations that identify students, especially if they're being disciplined. And some of them are coming before me for hearings, due process hearings. So if I say something or address a parent about that, I am in violation of the law and of that student's rights. Unfortunately, you know, I mean, fortunately, student, obviously, students have rights, and we have to be very careful about how it's, we address specific situations in bathrooms, because I could be hearing that hearing this week or next week, which I'm hearing some of those situations. And if they're laid out in a public forum, it puts me in a very bad spot legally to address that student and their parent and give them a fair hearing. So I'm not trying to shut anybody down, but I have to follow procedure and law and, and respect the rights of every student. Um, so we got to be very careful. I'm not trying, again, don't have people come up and speak, but, I mean, I, I can't have people coming up and speak, speaking of specific issues, especially if it's, there's a way that student can be identified.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. So again, Mr. Rodriguez.
Um, I share your concerns. My daughter is up here and my nephew. Every day I get a phone call from my nephew. He complains about lunch, but there is a big issue up here. We're not downplaying it or watercoating this anyway. Um, there needs to be a strong message sent to these students that are interrupting the learning time for other students, specifically with these TikTok videos. Uh, there was another challenge that was, um, brought up by TikTok today with, uh, students putting their hands on administrators and teachers. So there needs to be a strong message that we're not, we're not, we're not taking this lightly. Um, and some of these young, um, students in the high school, they need to learn that, um, that it, it, it travels with you when you're older. Um, I was one of those students. I was suspended. I sat in front of the superintendent when I was in my, in my freshman year, but I'm sitting here as a school committee member firsthand. I know how the high school is. It's a big school. There's over 4,000 students. There's a lot of pressure. Um, these kids have been home almost two years, but there needs to be a, a strong message sent that we're not taking none of this stuff lightly.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Okay, um, again, we already have a date time certain for next Tuesday. Thank you for calling that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we will move on. The agenda item number three, and again, thank you all for being here tonight. Consent agenda, uh, is agenda item three. It's A, B, C, D, E, and F. Anybody want to take any out or we'll take it collectively?
Motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Has written-
Motion on the floor by Mr. Sullivan, properly second by Mr. Minicello. Before I, I call the vote, let me just read it into the record, please. A is the approval of September 21, 2021, regular school committee meeting minutes. B, approval of September 21, 2021, finance subcommittee meeting minutes. C is the acceptance of notifications of personnel appointments, certified personnel. D is the acceptance of notification of personal appointments, non-certified personnel. And finally, E is the acceptance of notifications of personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. We have a motion that was properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. A, B, C, D, and E are passed unanimously. We'll now go on to agenda number four, which is the report of superintendent of the schools.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's one, um, the donation, um, from Mark Sims Scholarship Award. Uh, I'm going to ask to put that on the next school committee meeting that we, my, um, myself, um, didn't get the invitation to Mr. Sims, so Mitch Sims, so we're going to have him come to the next school committee meeting. So I apologize for that. So I want to make sure he's properly recognized. I've known Mitch for a long time. He's, when I used to run the Raise Up Basketball camp with Mr. Lewis, he used to, he always has been generous donating scholarships to, uh, kids in the, in the name of his brother, Mark, who loved basketball. Uh, he's made a very generous donation, uh, and we want to make sure he's recognized, um, rightfully. So we're going to, um, put him off until, uh, the second meeting in October. We'll make sure he'll get the invitation. So that, that was my fault.
Can we just take a motion on that, just on a Roberts Rules motion, to postpone that matter?
Oh, since to postpone to the next available date for the acceptance of the donation from the Sims family and to issue a invitation to the Sims family for the, the generous donation.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Minicello, properly second by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And then the next is the Amazon donation. So we want to thank, um, the Amazon facility in Stoughton, Mass. The leadership and staff donated 50 backpacks for elementary age group, uh, given children nowhere near the numbers that Ms. Ms. Azak gets for us. But, and they're Amazon. You, you, uh, you are running circles around Amazon. So, but we thank Amazon for their 50 backpacks. Again, this is their, um, Stoughton facility. Uh, they donated the backpacks, were, were filled with supplies, uh, graphing calculators, small calculators, headphones, flash drives. Actually, um, they put, you know, some really good stuff in there for the kids. Again, they were donated to, uh, and to elementary schools to students in need. Uh, so we thank, uh, the Amazon facility in Stoughton for this generous donation.
Thank you.
That's it. So next, we're going to have, uh, MCAS presentation, so I'm going to bring up Dr. Kancel and Dr. Zakowitz. Dr. Kancel and Dr. Zakowitz.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here with you all. We have grand hopes that we're going to cover this quickly but thoroughly, so we'll see how I do keeping my end of the bargain of trying to stay brief. So, here we are. My end of the presentation, that's me in front of the presentation that you'll soon be getting. We're going to cover, thank you for the laughs. I appreciate it. We're going to go for overall achievement. We're going to take a look at how we compare to the cities that are most like us, and we're going to call out SGP, Student Growth Percentile, because it's different this year. And then, we're going to toss the baton to Dr. Zakowitz, and she's going to cover the far more interesting and actually important part, which is going to be what we're going to do with this information. So, that is the agenda. It's, it's two parts of the, of the presentation. Before we leap to any conclusions, I wanted to go over a couple pandemic-oriented cautions. And so, you may hear from other people that the MCAS, it was a different test. It really wasn't a different test, but it was given differently this year. So, students were given half of the test. That is absolutely true, except for 10th grade. 10th grade received the entire test, and they received it in person. Students also had the option of taking it remotely. So, that is absolutely different, and as a result, if you have a child who got an MCAS score, there's a larger error band. It's not as precise as it usually is. But, at the school level, you still, especially in Brockton, with the size of our schools, you have plenty of data points, and the school-level data are certainly revealing, and you should definitely pay attention to what they are saying. The Student Growth Percentile, SGP, was calculated differently, and that's a very nice way of saying it's a mistake to compare this year's scores to last year's scores or any other year's scores. They will return to the normal way of doing it next year, but this year, they didn't have previous scores, so it's different. And statewide, not just Brockton, there is definitely a different impact based on the subject matter. So, math and science took a big hit statewide, and ELA not as bad, although it did take a hit. Okay. So, the main headline, and this is all based on brain science. The previous slides are supposed to stick in your head with these visual images. The main finding here is there's a great distance between where our students scored and where they need to be, and I'm going to be hitting that point frequently, but the, the real thing that we have to realize is there's a long way to go. So, that's a beautiful noir shot and comparable urban achievement. We do this because these are nine districts that we think are most similar to Brockton. These are the ELA scaled scores. Brockton is in the red. ELA is English Language Arts. You see on the left-hand side, the grades three through eight, and you see grade 10, and they're split out. Grade 10 is a qualitatively different experience. They took the entire test. They took it in person. So, it is a very different experience, and it counts for graduation. Grades three through eight is a different story. The most important thing to realize, we are down towards the bottom. That's important, because these are districts that, just like us, really struggled and suffered with COVID. However, the important thing to remember is 500 means that you're meeting grade-level expectations. That's the key number to remember. So, if meeting, not exceeding, but just the bottom of meeting is 500, that should be the minimum, minimum goal to shoot for. So, if you're at a 481.4 average score, that means that you're about 19, 18 and a half points away from where you need to be. That's a good distance away, and not good as in, that's a job well done, good as in big. So, grade 10, it's a little bit closer. We're in the middle of the pack, closer to 500, but not there yet. That's ELA, and I will tell you now, ELA is the better of the, of the subjects. However, I wanted to show you how it looks at the different grade levels. We can go through this pretty quickly. The key thing is, yes, we're down towards the bottom. That's important, but pay attention, again, you want to be at 500 at a minimum. 500 is defined by the state as meeting grade-level expectations. So, if you think about that, if you're not meeting grade-level expectations, you know, that's a problem, and when you're five points, 10 points, 15 points, 20 points, you're really not below the grade-level expectation. You're really not meeting grade-level expectation. So, it's something to think about. You see it again, similar setup with grades five and six. You might say, well, in grade six, we're moving up a little compared to the others, because now we're above Springfield and Lawrence, but look at the score, the 479.5. You're actually further away from 500. You're now more than 20 points. So, that's the important number to look at. You see, as we go up through the grades, you do see a little movement, and, but again, it's about 19, 18 and a half points away. Okay, and you already saw grade 10 earlier. So, here's the math side. So, you have 473.6. Now, relatively speaking, compared to the other urbans, we're similar in ELA and math, but you see the numbers, both for us and our fellow urbans. You see where we are. All right. Grade three had the lowest performance for the Brockton Public Schools, so that is a very, very, very large hurdle that, right now, grade four will have to work on overcoming. But, fear not, Dr. Zakowitz will tell you about the plan we have to accelerate. See grade five, grade six, you know, similar story. You're trying to get 500. You're about 25 points, more or less, away from that. Grade seven, grade eight. And science is a little different. I mean, in terms of the score, it's not different, but there is no grade 10. You see that because the class of 2023 was not required to take the Science, Technology, and Engineering, that's STE, test. But, you see, for grades five and eight, those are the two tested grades. You see Brockton with a 478.6. All right. So, now, I wanted to remind everyone historically where we were, or, you know, you could say, well, it was the pandemic. What do you expect? Our grades went down, the, our scores went down. They went down across the state. Yes, but, here's the story. If you look at it, we were treading water before. A point up, a point down is within the margin of error. That basically means flat scores. So, yes, we went down in ELA from a four, you know, 87, let's say, to a 481.4. Yes, that's down, but we weren't at 500 before either. So, one of the challenges that we have to take on, and that we are taking on, is that the test is a different level of challenge. This is the new MCAS. It is at a higher level than the old MCAS. But, we have to do things differently. We have to do things more effectively, because what we were doing before wasn't successful enough. We do not have to return back to where we were prior to the pandemic. We have to leap forward. So, you can see the math side, and again, this was similar across the state. So, math took a hit statewide. We're going to go over performance levels. Now, I don't know if I'm supposed to tell you this or not, but subliminally, there's a jet taking off there. That's supposed to subliminally affect everyone who sees this and get our scores up next year. We'll see if it works, but that's what, that silly jet icon is up there. This is a serious slide, though. I try to inject a little bit of humor, because what I'm going to say now isn't funny at all. It's very depressing. If you look at this, the E on the top stands for exceeding. The M that comes next is meeting expectations. That's 500 again. The partially meeting is PM, and then the NM is not meeting. What you'd like to see, you'd like to see the vast, vast majority of your kids in the meeting and exceeding categories. You'd like to see very few students in the partially meeting and not meeting. But unfortunately, that's not what we saw this past year. These are ELA performance levels, and you see that over 70% of your kids are in the partially or not meeting category. You see only 1.5% are exceeding, and you see basically that 80% or so are not, partially are not meeting, and that's at grades three through eight. It is a little bit better at grade 10, but still, the majority of kids are in the partially meeting and the not meeting. That's ELA. This is math. Unfortunately, in math, it's a little bit worse. You have almost no one meeting, exceeding expectations, grades three through eight, less than a percent, and you have 1.7% at grade 10. You have almost 50%, 45 and a half percent of your kids not meeting expectations, grade-level expectations. So, when you all went to school, when I went to school, not meeting, in our minds, equals failing. That's what it means to us, and so that's the level of work that needs to be done. Okay? You've got almost 80%, I'm sorry, almost 90%, 89% of the students in grades three through eight either partially meeting or not meeting. So, that's the story there. It is something that, you know, all the jokes aside, that's not a funny chart. That's not a chart that is uplifting. So, here's the science, grades five and eight. You see a similar setup to the previous ones. The vast majority of students are not meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations in science. Again, this is only grades five and eight. That's, the state did not report the grade 10. Okay. I promised that I would talk very briefly about the Student Growth Percentile. I regaled the executive team with a long and lengthy discussion in the weeds, which I promise I will not do, I will not subject you to it, but basically, the long and the short of it is, the state decided, we're going to change the way we calculate student growth percentile, and it's going to be different. Just to remind everyone, in prior years, 50 is considered good. Anyplace between 40 to 60 is considered good growth. They still want that to be the case, except this is how we did, and this is how our comparable urbans did. The entire state average was low, so that's something to accept. Now, this is a positive, but it's not that big of a positive. It is clearly demonstrating that the growth in Brockton was slightly higher than the growth in the comparable urbans. We will take that that is much better than being at the bottom. There are two caveats, two things to think about. One, this is based on two years ago's scores. Our two years ago's scores were not very good. So, if you were at the bottom of the nine comparable urbans last two years ago, your test now is being compared to when you did very poorly. That may contribute to the, relatively speaking, higher growth. That, that may just be the case. And the other thing is, you want to be much higher than this. Your goal is to be in the 40 to 60 range, preferably around 50. So, it is what it is. There's some positive, but when a student takes MCAS at the high school level, if they don't pass, they don't get a high school degree. Okay? That's the bottom line. Growth, that's very nice, but it doesn't get you a high school diploma. So, that's something that I, yes, it's a positive, but I don't want people to say, well, you know, look at this. This is the growth at the 10th grade level. Now, the thing that's really interesting, and the state doesn't understand it, they're doing more research into it, it's a mystery, but grade 10 ELA, the average Student Growth Percentile was actually above 50. It was actually above 52. Now, that's really interesting. The growth scores look kind of normal, a little bit low for Brockton, but kind of normal on the ELA side. The math side looks nothing like normal. And this is across, you know, I actually threw it in there just to show you. The state on the very end there, that 36.5, that's the state's average. We're much lower than that, but it's, it's an unusual year for growth. I wouldn't spend a huge amount of time on it. It is a different way to calculate it. The bottom line is, we have a lot of work to do. Luckily for you all, we will give you subgroup data in a separate presentation. I say luckily because I know how much you enjoy my presentations. Thank you for the laughs again. I'm doing well tonight. But, we will go into much more detail. We've really broken down the data so that we can get some good insights. And now, I'm passing the baton, literally and positively. So, here you go.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and those are just numbers. So, the key is, all right, which one am I pushing? What? Patient? Patient. I'm not, I'm never patient. Patient is not a word one would use to describe me. So, these are numbers that you just heard from Ethan, and it's depressing. But the key question is not about numbers. It's about what we do with this, and it's about action. So, given that, I want to talk to you about steps we've taken, and then what steps we still need to take. And I should have actually put in at the beginning, a step was already taken last year by this committee by supporting some, bringing in some really strong grade-level appropriate curriculum materials. And I thought of it when, when Ethan was presenting all the math. Right now, this is being utilized in every classroom, pre-K to 5, but then also the middle schools have new materials, the high schools, so it's step by step. Unfortunately, curriculum is just a tool. That's the books. That's the resources. That's materials. And what happens are the teachers who bring it to life in the classroom. So, how does that happen? And hopefully, with the materials that people now have, we started by saying, here's what this district needs to do. Focus, focus, focus. I think the way Ethan put it was a reminder to everybody that none of the scores he showed were recent. I mean, it's, it's a recent score, but it's not a sudden dip. This has been a long and continuous decline, and that needs alarm bells going off all the time. So, initiatives really have to be translated into, we all need to be going in the same direction, same message, same, everybody's on point. And so, what does that mean? Well, the first focus area, we shared with these with you before, and we're just trying to be relentless about this, and, and we hope that you share the same message. Curriculum materials will come to life in the hands of teachers, and it so is. Number one, it is about effective instruction. And all of this will be around, constantly promoting and working with teachers to support effective instruction. Secondly, it needs to be a direct, very strong focus on active reading and writing. I'm going to talk more about that in just a little bit. And thirdly, the focus on positive relationships. And I think, as you recall from the district review, it was the third one that was really the only place in the district review that we were credited with really moving things forward. But, one and two is what we really, we just need to be relentless about. I just keep using that word relentless, but that's what it's going to take. So, how do we implement these three focus areas? All right. Well, first of all, and we can share the hard copy so you can see it a little bit better than this, but I thought, just even seeing, seeing what it looks like. At the district level, one of the things that we are implementing right now is a Brockton Public Schools District Lesson Plan Template built around the focus areas. So, every teacher, I mean, a lesson needs to be planned. You can't, every teacher, there's so many of us in the room. I taught for so many years. You always think about what you're going to do, but what we're trying to get people to do is think about it in the lens of effective instruction. What is effective instruction? What does effective instruction mean? And it means that you have to plan some things before your instruction, then during your, during the class, you're doing certain things. And then, how do you know the kids learned it? What are they going to learn? How are they going to learn it? And how do you know they know it? And so this template will be used in its electronic version and we're working with teachers now so that they, they know how to use it and can work together on some common planning with it. And this was just released. Okay, come on, I'm not being patient. All right. Now, this expression I'm going to use a lot. What, Ethan presented the data, but the data needs to become actionable. It's what you do with it and how you work with it. So what are we doing at the building level? Well, now, this year, starting this year, and it's already been happening, in fact, they're almost finished, Dr. Kinzel and Maria LaFort, who was my first associate principal at Brockton High, and there is nobody better to know instruction than Maria LaFort. And I probably, I probably mentioned last time, when, when I first was appointed principal at the time, Joe Beige was the superintendent and he said to me, who are you going to tap as your associate? And I said, Maria LaFort. And he said, well, she hasn't even been an administrator. I said, no one knows instruction better than her. So when Mr. Thomas called, I said, we also need to have Maria LaFort. And Maria is working with Ethan and what they're doing is, and they've already done this, they've almost finished, every school principal and their teams need to understand the data. Because sometimes you just look at it and you're like, oh, we went up, we went down. What do you do with it? And that has become these data meetings, these presentations with the principals and the team. And I think as of next Wednesday, you're, they, they will have done, every, met with every school. And that's a different approach. It's very hands-on. It's like, we all need to do this together. And the question, the biggest question is, how does this data inform the instruction? And so how do we know it's informing instruction? Well, a teacher can plan a good lesson, but I was a history teacher, in fact, some of my students are here. And it depresses me to hear that they have children in high school and all of that, but I'm, I'm, I'm understanding how old I am now. And I told Mr. Thomas, when you want to show how old the school is, I was in the first graduating class. So we need a new building. That's just a side story, anyway. But let me be serious. It is time to really focus on what is happening in the classroom. I could plan a good lesson as a history teacher, but I also knew that a plan was only as good as when it came in contact with the kids. And so sometimes you can plan a great lesson, but you've got to revise and you've got to, you've got to adjust on this. So what we have also developed and are implementing now, and this, this is something I think, these are sort of systems, I guess I'm sort of a systems thinker, these are systems that the district needs to have in place. A Brockton Public Schools District walkthrough tool. And it's built around the focus areas. And again, we'll give you hard copies so you can see it more clearly. But you can see that this would be team, here's how this would work. Teams of administrators, us from central, the principal, the, the coaches, the teams, teachers, when you walk through, you don't just walk around and look, you walk around with a, and by the way, you know, school committee, anybody, you just, we set it up though, it's organized, you don't just wander around. It's certain classrooms with this focus in mind. And you can see very clearly, it's around, before instruction, what do you look for, certain things? If you come in in the middle of a class, what are you looking for during instruction? That's different. How about if you happen to come in at the end of the class? Because these are not full class observations. They are 10 to 15 minutes maybe, if that. You, you are arriving at different times and so clearly, you're looking for different things at different times. So if you came in at the end, how are you seeing the teacher wrap up and, and monitoring the progress of the lesson? What are you looking for in active reading and writing? And we've already worked with the principals on this and what the faculty is looking for. And what about the positive relationships? So that's our district walkthrough tool. And the power of the walkthroughs is solidly based in research. Because this is, the walkthrough tool allows you to see how the data inform instruction. Things like, you're saying things like, well, here's what our data show, here's what we saw. And then, everybody debriefs and you set goals for the next walkthrough and you support when necessary. If you see something that's not working, it's not about, let me make something clear. This is not about a personal teacher evaluation. This is about how the district is doing with instruction across the school. Because if you don't have something like this, I talked about this the first time I spoke to you, you end up having success by chance, not success by design. Success by chance, meaning if you're lucky enough to get Maria LaFort, you were going to learn how to write. If you got me, the history teacher, I might say, you know, read it again, I don't know, write this. I didn't know how to do it as well. So I think what you're seeing is a systems approach to attacking this. And that's how the walkthrough tool is so powerful. Come on. There we go. And some key questions that the principals and their teams are asking, and Ethan and Maria raised these with the teams. They have to start asking, the data is very, the data are very informative. And it shows what are the skills lacking in the student's performance. Like, for example, I can already tell you too, based on what they saw as a district, two areas where we are way below the state, not paralleling the other areas, is in vocabulary and context. And that's, that's attackable. That's a skill that can be taught. Then a more difficult skill, which is inferencing skills. That's a higher level thinking skill. Doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means it requires a certain type of instruction. How do we address those skills and ensure teachers are teaching the students those skills? And this is the line that's so key for all of you, at the level they need to be. That's why Ethan kept stressing, rightly so, 500 is the level. So even though we feel better that in a certain one, we might have been a little bit higher, we're way below what's acceptable. So this needs to be about grade level appropriate work and instruction. Do the learning experiences our kids are getting mirror the MCAS for rigor and grade level appropriate work? We need to work with our faculty and our lessons around rigor and appropriate, like the, we, the first time a kid sees a question at that high rigor should not be when they're sitting for a high stakes test. They should be struggling with that in classes all the time, where the teacher is there to support them and they can work on something again. And how about our assessments? Are we assessing kids the same way that they'll be held accountable by the state? We need to be. So that's something, those are the questions we ask. Sure, I hope so. I, I've had trouble going forward, Mr. Minichello, so I'll see what I can do here. That one?
Yes.
Got it.
How do we address those skills and ensure teachers are teaching our students those skills at the level they need to be? Do you recall when, when you first came back, I said to you, we need to be aware of who our students are, where they're coming from? Can you, can you talk to us about where they need to be? And with our diverse population, how we get them there with, with all of the differences? How do we do this so that we give each child what they need in the method they need it, need it delivered or, you know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
I'm not saying it eloquent like you can, but that's what I'm saying.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Our kids are not, when I came to high school here, they're coming from so many different places, which is a great thing. But how do we ensure that these kids from here and here and here and here and at this level are getting it?
Right.
In the, you know, it's being, that's the big framework.
It is the big, and it's, it's the most important.
And how do we deliver to those subgroups?
It's the most important question because that's about instruction.
Okay.
That's where the skill of the teacher is the key message in this. Because here's what I know about Brockton kids, and I am one. And, and our kids are the same as any other kid in the state. I don't care from what background they come from. Our kids are, are strong and capable. And so here's how I would answer that question and I'm going to channel Sharon Walder, because Sharon was my second associate principal. So I was the luckiest principal in the world to first have Maria LaFort and then have Sharon Walder. And what Sharon used to say when, when teachers or, or parents or, or anybody would say, our kids can't do this. Sharon's answer would be, perhaps they can't yet, but that's because we haven't found a way to teach it to them yet. So the answer to your question is, it's about the adults. It's about us. And so what that means is, and I'm going to talk a little bit about it in a, in a moment, it's about not full class instruction all the time. It's about differentiating and scaffolding instruction so that you can provide those just in time supports for the kids. And by the way, the data is so rich now, you can tell exactly who's got it and who doesn't. And so what a teacher should do is know that group kids on the spot. And that's why some of the staffing changes that have been, they're helpful to have other people in the room, more paraprofessionals have been added back. All of that helps. But that's, it is absolutely the key challenge.
To that point, the schools committee simultaneously is adding positions, adding resources. Are you reviewing what we're doing to make sure that these are in alignment with delivery?
Oh, I would say, I would say nothing is getting by Mr. Thomas along those lines right now.
But what I'm saying to you is, I just want to make sure that we are adding positions so that we can effectively give these kids, each kid, what they need.
Right. That's right. That's right.
Okay. Dr. Check. And I was going to wait till the end, but since we're kind of.
But this is so riveting, you couldn't stop yourself.
Absolutely. I just couldn't stop myself. But since we're here and we're, and you, something you said and something Mr. Minichello also said, kind of hinted on where I was going to go with some of my comments at the end. You know, I had a, a, a meeting and a discussion with some teachers recently and one of the, there were several issues they raised and that's why Melinda's setting up a meeting for me, you and the superintendent. But one of them that, that came through and a lot of it was all the safety and issues we talked about already. But one thing that really came through is they talked a lot about, and you just talked about breaking kids into groups, is they're being told, you know, teach a grade level, but they need to meet the kids where they are, you know? And the, the kids may not be at grade level, especially coming out of COVID now.
Right.
And, and so, you know, what are we doing to, to make sure, or, and I know these things take time, they don't snap your fingers and all of a sudden, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're giving the teachers the opportunities to meet them where they are? And some kids, like, you know, if a teacher has 20 kids in front of them, five might be here, five might be in a different spot and.
That's right.
You know, so how are we going to be able to address that?
Yeah, and I think that's, you're exactly right. And it can't be like the days of the lecturer standing at the front of the room in front of the cast of thousands, just talking. You're right. And it has to be supported by us with quality professional development. It's almost like effective instruction comes from being well-prepared. And I think teachers need to be able to work with each other. There needs to be collaborative planning. There needs to be support. They've got the materials now, the materials, it's going to take time, by the way, on some of these new programs, because many of the teachers are facing multiple new programs in the first year. So, I mean, I, I can absolutely understand when they're like, geez, first we're getting this and then this and then this. So I think that's absolutely true. But you're right, kids are going to be at all different levels. But you can't keep going back and remediating, because if you keep focusing on remediating, you never bring kids up. So it's about targeting skills, grouping kids differently to address particular skills. Like I said, this is where the technology has helped, because you can identify immediately standards that kids know, move them on. I would know which kids, you know, can, can do this and then you group them together and provide more individual attention. And it's called scaffolding and differentiation. But teachers need to be prepared for that and we need to do a better job with that. You know, simply just sending people to a conference isn't the professional development that is going to make the difference for the teachers. It's going to be really effective, hard, time-consuming professional development where people know, they get the support in doing something like this. It's, you're right, it's not easy and it, and it's, it's, it's come from years of decline. It's not going to just suddenly turn.
Right.
But there are things, I believe, will make an immediate difference.
Which is good to hear, because I think both, you know, us as a school committee and certainly parents and as a parent of a student in Brockton Public Schools, you know, and after seeing the, clearly the results, time's not on our side.
Right. You're exactly right.
Time's not on our side. And, you know, and I, and I will share another comment that came from some of those discussions I had, which was, we've been doing a lot of the same things for 10 years, eight years. What's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result?
Exactly.
So that was my other kind of follow-up for the end is, what are we going to do different?
Right.
Because seriously, it's time.
Well, let me keep moving forward and then I'll, and hopefully I'll answer some of those. So this is one of them. And I hope you're, all of you who are parents in here, I hope your children come home complaining bitterly about this, day after day after day. Because this is what's missing, I think. It's just active reading and focus on writing have an immediate research-based impact on student achievement. And so what does that mean? And so we met with the principals last Wednesday and the principals are having their own work with their own faculty. But we actually define clearly what active reading and writing means for us in Brockton and what the expectation is. And so here is the expectation. So if your children come home complaining, say good. In fact, let me give you some more of this at home, right? So here's what it means. It means that every day, in every class for some period of time, doesn't have to be the whole class, in fact, it shouldn't be. You learn in smaller chunks. We all know that, right? If you have to sit and listen to me for much longer, you're going to not be listening. I know that. So it's smaller chunks. So for a period of time in the class, students need to engage with a challenging, grade level appropriate reading. And that means in the content areas. I'm not saying that kids in every subject area are reading Shakespeare. If you're in a science class, you're reading, this is tough informational text, you're reading about the science. If I'm a science teacher teaching about volcanoes, the reading is about volcanoes. It's, it's context-based. It's not, you know, it's not this artificial, just another thing. It's, it's content-based. And then, students need to be asked to respond to a question that the teacher develops. We have to do some work on writing rigorous, high-level questions. But they need to respond to a question about that text they just read in writing, every day, every class, and they will complain. They complained when we were doing the literacy at the high school and I would go boo hoo. So, and let me see what you're writing. Let's, because that makes a difference. Writing, here's what you say back to them. This is research-based. Writing is thinking. When a child can express themselves in writing, you know whether they know it or whether they don't. Because if I asked my students, not the ones that are here, my former students that are here understood everything. However, if I asked, Mr. Sullivan, you understood everything, didn't you? Right. But if I asked my.
Remember we acted out the assassination.
We did.
And so we were.
Black hand. Black hand.
I think you were the assassin.
I think I was.
I can believe that.
We're digressing, let's get back to the slides. But if I just ask them if they get it, kids always say they do, they don't want to disappoint you, right? They say, uh huh, are you with me? Are you with me? Yep, yep, yep. It's when they have to write to you, when they have to write something back, that's when you know as a teacher, did they understand it? That tells you what they learned and what they, what you need to reteach. And here's the other thing, there's, there's a number of great books about this, but one that I love is called Talent is Overrated and it talks about the power of deliberate, repeated practice. How do you learn something? Every musician in this room or athlete in this room knows the answer to this question. How do you learn something? Practice, practice, practice. Repetition on the same thing. And that, and it pushing yourself. You don't want to repeat something that you already know how to do well. You repeat something that you're learning to do. So this is going to be a challenge and there'll be some pushback. But this informs teachers what the students have learned. So let me try to go ahead here. I need more work on this clicker. Okay. And district-wide, we have also tried to address something that was, we were called out for in the district review badly and rightly so. And that was the evaluation of leaders and teachers in the school district. It hasn't been done with consistency. It hasn't been done in a way that needed to be done. And we all know this, what gets monitored is what gets done and not in a bad way. Feedback is powerful in a, you know, we all learn from feedback we're given. And so we actually added a new director of hiring, but also her specialty is actually evaluation, Dr. Karen Spalding. We're doing next Wednesday, is it next Wednesday? This coming Wednesday, we're doing a workshop with principals on evaluation and we're really going to start working with them on providing the feedback to get at some of the questions you're asking about, how do you improve instruction? And it's just like teachers improve their students' instruction with feedback, we do the same for the feedback with instruction. And so here are our challenges moving forward. This is my line this year, because people keep taking, I haven't been here, people keep taking me back, well, this happened, well, this happened, well, this happened. And I, you know what, it doesn't matter. Moving forward, that's what we need to do, move forward. We have to follow the data. And that data, the analysis that Ethan provided, he's got a lot more, and we'll break it down in different, you need to be aware of all aspects of this, but trying to do it in one presentation is not the way to do it, so he's gonna break it up in chunks. And so that will target skills we can attack. There are many, some are very hard and more complex, but there are some that when you look at it, you think, this is very teachable across, across the district. We need to support the instruction in the schools, and this is what, to your point, Mr. Minicello, around grade-level appropriate work, and in fact, DESI is, we are part of a DESI team, that is, the Department of Ed is, we've already been on one webinar, but there's many to come, on how, they have an acceleration roadmap. How do you do this where you're not just remediating, but you're accelerating? Because every district is facing the same after the pandemic. And what the message of the acceleration roadmap from DESI is, is this, ensuring strong grade-appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they are needed, and then continuously monitoring students' understanding of that. So on that note, Ethan and I will take any other questions that, that you might have. But also, he will, it will be back with other pieces of this as various meetings come.
It seems to me that with what you're saying, there are some things that can be implemented that may not require a huge investment of money. It seems to be like an investment of attitude. And an investment of, I guess, change in, in delivery, presentation, focus on effective instruction, making sure teachers have the skills required and access to proper materials. Would you say that, is there any correlation, though, in terms of, so the data that Ethan showed us, you know, shows that, he says, you know, that the tests have changed, but the tests have changed for all those communities, not just Brockton. I mean, so, now Brockton got hit the hardest over these last eight years financially from the state, and that, and that's why we got change in education funding. Is there any correlation with the decline in our funding each year? And now, we have now have the resources to invest in all of these different positions because, and resources in terms of changes in curriculum, updating the materials, having enough books, resources. Is there any correlation with money to delivery?
Well, I'll start it, and then Ethan can follow, because he knows the data better than I do. But I would say, of course, I'm sure there's some, but I haven't been here, but I'm also gonna say this, literacy is free, and focusing on active reading and writing cost us zero at Brockton High School, zero. It was about an intense relentless focus on one thing. I, I would say to you, if you have lots of initiatives going on at one time, it's hard to do one well, or a couple well. And so I think our message really needs to be, let's bring everything together, so. But do I think quality materials make a difference? You bet. I mean, I was a history department head when there was, there were no books beyond Nixon as president. So, you know, that, that's absolutely something that helps, no question. But those are just tools in the process of delivering quality instruction. And I'm gonna say this again, literacy is not trendy, it's not an event, like, oh, it's Tuesday, my literacy day. No, it's always on, and it's free. So, that's, that's always gonna be my answer to that. But let me let Ethan expound on that a bit.
I don't think I can expound much on it, but I think that you, Mr. Minicello, and the mayor, and the lawyer types, would, when we were suing the state, you kept mentioning there had to be harm. Well, if we kept cutting, there was harm, and you could see our scores going down. We didn't have the people, we didn't have the leadership, and it definitely, I forget the legal term that you use, but there definitely was harm, we could demonstrate that harm. I do wanna use an analogy, though. Basically, we've purchased the weights. Lifting the weights is the work. We have the weight set, it's there. Ask Aldo about buying weight sets, you have to use them, though. And, and that's what, you know, what Sue brings is this relentless focus, and she keeps saying, you know, that, that boo hoo line, if your kids are gonna complain, yes, now give them some more at home also. And, and that, I think, is going to be, you know, Sue is right, she mentions it's research-based, yes, it is research-based. If you look at the districts that have moved historically, including countries, they all start the same thing, it's always literacy, but it's how hard they're willing to work it, that's what it is.
It's not a, it's not a public hearing to ask questions.
I'm sorry.
But definitely you could take it offline.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. It's just a public meeting, not a public hearing under Robert's rules.
Sorry.
But thank you, no worries. Any questions for Ethan or Dr. Zach at all? Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Renee Haywood, Executive Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. She's gonna come up and talk about what was presented at our subcommittee meeting, the mission and vision of the EDI office. Welcome, Renee.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. I'm really excited to present to you the vision, mission, and just focus areas of the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Hopefully this will work. What's that? Uh-oh.
Cut it off.
I did, okay. Is that it? Okay, there we go. The Brockton Public Schools Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion is committed to leading efforts to build a more representative, equitable, and inclusive school district to foster positive youth outcomes. And I'm reading these directly, I know that they're in front of you, but it's important because this is something that I do want to make sure that it's shared on a wider level. The vision is to be a leader among peers, as a learning and workplace environment that is representative of our nation and global society, accepts and values everyone, appreciates our common humanity, and understands that our diversity and layered identities are what makes us unique as a school district. The mission is to move forward with urgency and purpose to create and sustain a more equitable, diverse, and inclusive school district that is reflected in our policies, practices, and workspaces. And so my team and I, we developed three guiding principles, and then we'll move into the four focus areas. The first one is equity. We affirm the complexities of our multiracial, multi-ethnic, and multicultural histories, cultures, and experiences. We recognize that there are inequalities and privileges generated by historical and persistent intersecting differences by race, ethnicity, gender identities, gender expressions, sexual orientation, socio-economic status, abilities, religion, citizenship, status, and nationality. We are committed to and hold ourselves accountable for policies, processes, and programs that appreciate these and other differences, and create more fair, safe, and just learning, working, and academic environments for the students, staff, and educators of Brockton Public Schools. The second guiding principle, diversity. Come on. I just might need your help to advance, so we're not wasting time. No, I know, I've got a buddy up there. Are you able to advance a slide from there? Got it. Thank you, Ethan. Diversity, we celebrate the diversity of our city and student body. As a district, where the majority of our students are people of color, we have a unique opportunity to create an academic and a workplace experience that will prepare all stakeholders for a global society, where the majority of its people are Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The third guiding principle, inclusion. We are committed to and hold ourselves accountable for a school district in which the diversity of our students, staff, and educators practice mutual respect and share dignity in learning, working, living, and social environments. We are committed to doing so in ways that provide opportunities for intellectual growth and professional development, for careers, service to the public, and civic engagement in a diverse society regardless of social, cultural, and economic background and experience. It is imperative that we consider the layered identities of our community members and ensure that each individual is recognized and included in our policies, processes, and procedures. And so in order to support our district goals, we have the three focus, focus areas for our district goals, the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion will prioritize our focus on these four areas over the next five years. These areas will be measured by annual assessments, evaluations, and stakeholder feedback. The first one, to increase recruitment and retention of more diverse educators and staff that are representative of our student body. Second one, to improve the school climate for all students, educators, and staff to be, to best achieve their academic and professional goals. Third area, provide professional development for educators and staff that gives them the tools to deliver high-quality educational services that build genuine connections with their students resulting in positive outcomes. And finally, develop a decolonized curricula and instructional resources that promote practices that re-center transformational teaching and learning and a protocol for their use. So that is our focus, our mission and vision. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Minicello? Good evening.
When people, you know, see something that's new and different, you know, you sort of start to wonder, you know, is this okay? You know, are things gonna be okay? And, you know, hiring the right people is so important with regard to change and new, and new initiatives, and I'd like to compliment you in terms of the person that is in charge of this department.
Yeah, thank you.
You bring forth a very rich history and experience, and a very good set of judgments, working with people, working together. So I'm very glad that you're here to basically introduce this topic to our school system and our community. And you and I have, you know, had conversations and had a little bit of time to discuss things, and I think we both know that this is an opportunity to introduce people to new materials and to view things in perhaps a different way, but the goal is the same, to make sure that our students are all prepared to move forward in a, in a way that's gonna benefit them, and, and make sure that they have the tools to go forward and be successful, you know, you know, in whatever endeavor they do, whether it's, you know, moving on to college, or whether it's moving on to a trade, you know, make sure they're successful and they can do that, and that they have the tools to do so. Could you just, I guess, expand a little bit on, you know, simultaneously making sure that our kids are well-prepared for the future, and that there's, there's no shortcuts with regard to, you know, making sure that the curriculum that they receive will be a top-notch and curriculum that they deserve and will, and will experience here in the Brockton Public Schools?
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that, because I know just by the mere fact that this office has been created has maybe caused some concern for people, you know, the change, and what is this? And we're not used to having these discussions. And even the discussion around, you know, the concern maybe of the change of curriculum or certain personnel as we increase people of color, you know, in our staff and educators, that that might be a change that might not support moving ahead and meeting our goals. And there's research that certainly speaks to when you diversify your school staff, that positive outcomes increase for students, because they have people who have a different background, different perspective, it opens their minds to having different conversations, that's learning. So speaking about race, that's learning, because it's a skill that we have to give our kids. I mean, it's great, I've been in Brockton for 30 years, my kids have gone through this system, and it's great that we have the diversity that we have, but we can also ignore our neighbor. And so we have to create a space where they can comfortably speak about race, where they can comfortably be in spaces with people that don't look like them, but in authority positions, not just the person sitting next to them, not a fellow student, but an educator in front of them, a principal, someone like me, because that teaches them a skill that they are going to need in this world. And if we keep them the way that we've, we've done it all along, by giving them material that is disconnected to who they are, by creating an environment that is not welcoming to who they are, they will shut down. And we will see our numbers drop even more significantly than they are now. So now is the time to really jump in and make these changes to curriculum, to staff, to our mindset, because we all have work to do. Just because I'm a woman of color, and I'm, I speak Spanish, that does not mean that I fully understand everything about those cultures. I taught that culture, I, I learned it in college. However, I don't know everything, but when we come together, that's some powerful stuff that we can do. And so as our kids are coming through this system, they're seeing people like me in authority, they're looking at the executive board and the diversity, they're looking at their teachers, and not just the person who's pushing the broom at the end of the day, but someone who has authority in that classroom. That's how you change mindsets. So it's not just for kids of color, it's for white kids too, because they're going out into the same world. And so I'm glad that you asked that question, because it's important to kind of just discuss overall what we're doing here, because I know that this is the first time I have publicly stated the vision and the mission in front of this larger group. And I also understand the anxiety that some people might feel doing this work. I've been doing this for a long time, and I understand that, I feel that. I feel it myself, I'm putting myself out there as well. So we're, we're doing this together and building community, so that this is a safe space, that this is a place where everyone feels that they belong. So thank you for leading me into, into that.
Just a little further follow-up with that. Can you, can you express to the public that, this in no way, when we talk about expanding diversity and hiring more staff, this is in no way to be viewed as a watering down. We're looking for qualified people, we're not, we're not looking to diversify for the sake of diversification.
Absolutely.
We want good people, we want our kids to be taught by excellent people. Because if you, if you're just hiring based on what someone looks like, and yet they don't have the content to present, you know, a physics, or a chemistry, or what, you know, our kids will not be prepared, you know, in those, in those areas of concentration. So, so could you just expand on that aspect of, to inform the public in terms of diversity, yes, but there needs to be qualification, and this is not a watering down, it's a, it's a strengthening of the system, you know?
Do you mind if I say real quick?
Go ahead, please.
So Tom, this is the second time you've said that, and personally, I have taken some offense to it, because- some offense to it because just creating the safe space from the higher up, I would never say we're going to water down the system or let's not water down the system because we need to hire more qualified white people. So I really think we also, and, and these are teaching moments, right? So I think, I, I understand you're coming with well-intentioned, I think you're a very well-intentioned person, but I think part of these spaces is how we're expressing ourselves even when we're well-intentioned because at the end of the day, it could be very traumatizing. I remember the first time you expressed yourself that way, I actually questioned myself and I said, "No, but I'm very qualified." Like, I've gone to very prestigious institutions and like, I've worked my ass off, you know? So I think it's, it's also that, right, where kids could hear it from the higher up and then they feel like it's okay to express themselves. Again, Mr. Minichello, I know you're well-intentioned and I know you have a great heart, but I think these are the conversations that are necessary to have because if we express ourselves like that in other spaces, that may not be okay with expressing ourselves that way, you know, that's when we got to teach our kids the skills. I also think like the goals and areas that Ms. Hayward talked about have a, literally a direct connection with our deputy superintendent, that she talked about actionable data, right? She talked a lot about, you know, the vocabulary easy to beat, but the inferences is a skill that we really need to work on. But then when I think about decolonizing the curriculum, right, moving towards transformational and healing, I think that, doing that and doing what the deputy superintendent and Ethan Cancel just spoke about, literally has a direct connection and will help build our kids the confidence to be better and to really love literature, either if it's in science class, is it math class, or English class. So I also think we have to see D E I work as being a literal direct connection of how to improve our curriculum and how to, you know, be able to help our students be better at the MCAS because as we know, that's tied to funds that we need in our district to move forward. So, Mr. Minichello, again, I don't mean to call you out, but it's something that you've said, this is the second time, and I've had other people also comment on it, it has personally bothered me. So I think we, we should be okay providing the space and the comfort, which kind of what Ms. Hayward talked about, to be able to just educate each other on that.
So, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, well, I mean, and that's what this is all about, educating ourselves in terms of what is happening and what everything means in terms of, you know, decolonizing the curriculum. You know, I'm trying to learn. Again, I don't mean to offend anyone, I'm just trying to have an open conversation. And as I said in that subcommittee meeting, sometimes people might say something that's incorrect or wrong, and it's not that they're trying to offend people, it's trying to learn. It's, it's a new, it's a new topic, it's a new concept, and that, and that's why I am glad that you're here in charge of it because, you know, you do a great job in terms of what we've already discussed, you know, you explain things to me that I, you know, I've never really thought about. And, you know, to my colleague, I, I certainly respect your right to, you know, say whatever you want in terms of if you think I've said something out of incorrectly or out of turn, I certainly, like I said, don't mean to offend anyone, I'm just trying to, to learn and trying to present to the public, you know, what these certain terms mean. You know, people have talked to me and said, you know, what, what does decolonize the curriculum mean? So if you could expand on that so that we can, you know, understand that. I know at that meeting, my colleague, you know, Mr. Rodriguez, said something that really made me think, and I thought it was something very good, you know, he said to me, or he said in the meeting, he said, you know, "The history of this country, you know, was, was built on, you know, people of color as well, and, and we need to learn about, you know, the contributions of other people." And I thought that was, I took that as, wow, that, you know, he, he's right, he's absolutely right. There's, there's people that, you know, I don't know that have invested or been successful that we all should learn about, which, which is great. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about. So, I mean, really, it's, it's an opportunity to, to grow and learn more about the country and more about certainly people of color and certainly where, you know, the city, you know, is well-represented with people of color. I mean, could you just comment on that? Again, Ms. Menendez, if I've offended you, I, I didn't intend to do that. I'm just trying to, you know, to learn about this, and, you know, this is the opportunity to, to, you know, ask questions, and so that, that's what I'm trying to do, you know, so.
Right, and that's why it's important that you should have known more about the contributions, and that's what we're trying to fix now, you know, because history books are written like from one, I mean, most of our curriculum that we use in America, it has a one, one lens, it was built for a certain group of folks, that's the history. So we have to fix that because we're doing an injustice to our kids by just showing them this, this small piece of history and, and even how, you know, we can manipulate history to tell a story that doesn't make us uncomfortable. And so, we want to be okay with the uncomfortable, which I'm, I'm glad that this actually happened because we're modeling that for other people.
Yeah, I feel a little uncomfortable, but now I feel like, all right, let me have some questions and learn from it, you know.
Right, and we want, we want to have these discussions because I want us to get to a level where we are able to be comfortable and, and say, you know what, hey, let's think about this a little bit differently because we all grow by doing that. And I think that we become a better community, a close-knit community, if we can really be honest about how we're feeling about particular things that are new to us. So, just to go back to your term, you actually kind of defined it in a way, how you said, you gave the example, Mr. Rodriguez, saying that there are more contributions that were made in history that don't end up in the history book. So decolonizing is de-centering the white narrative all the time, or that white folks are the heroes, white folks are the ones that did all the great things, and then here we come with subservient black people who were slaves. And then where were, you know, the Latino population, where, where are all of these folks that were here, but no one talks about them? So imagine, if you're a kid and you're reading this book, you know the stories that your family have told you. You, you remember those stories, but it's not, it's not in the book, it's a negative spin on it. So you can feel, for an example, for example, ashamed because, and that's how I felt in my history classes. It was slavery and civil rights, and it depended on what teacher you got as to how that was spun. So slavery was embarrassing for me because I was always the only black person in my class. And so, I was always asked, "How do you feel? I'm supposed to represent the entire black race." And we all don't agree, just like all white people don't agree. So there's an assumption made, and I'm put in this, this uncomfortable position to speak on behalf of the entire race. And so, those are, are things that we have to start talking about because we have great intentions. That might have been a teacher trying to pull me into a lesson, giving me something to say and add, but that teacher didn't understand what that did to me. And so, I had a hostile relationship with my teacher, my history teacher, and it didn't end so well. And I don't want that to happen in our school systems, and a lot of it is because we, we don't know. Some people do stuff on purpose, let's just be real, but a lot of folks just don't know and they have great intentions. And that's why we have to learn together so that we don't hurt each other. I'm moving towards healing, and so I know that talking about race brings up this idea of division and separate, but that's not what I'm doing. I'm trying to pull us together. This is the time, we've been through a lot in these last couple of years, and so we can't afford to allow things to go status quo. We have to shift, and sometimes the shift is uncomfortable, but the shift is worth it for all of us. So it's not just an affirming thing for our students of color, but it's, it's knowledge that our white students and our white teachers need to know because they spend a lot of time with our kids, and we've all been shaped in some way or another, we've heard the testimonies about Dr. Zach, we've all been shaped in one way or another by the educators in our lives, good or bad. And so, this is our opportunity, we have the kids in our hand, we have to do right by them, all of them.
So I, so I compliment my colleague, Mr. Rodriguez, for, you know, saying what he did that night because it really did open my eyes.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it is a different perspective. And, you know, I, I think that the school system will be better by it. And at the same time, I think that, you know, there, there is an element out there in the world on, on both sides where there are people that like to inflame and there are people that like to, to, to use this topic as, as, not for the students, not for education, but for their own interests. And I think we have the right people here in Brockton to make sure that we do it right. And I'm just glad that, that, you know, my colleagues and I can have an open conversation, you know, and, you know, we're still going to be friends, I mean, you know, and that, that's a good thing. It is an uncomfortable topic for, for me, and I'm sure a lot of people. Because, again, you know, it doesn't feel good right now, but I, I think that, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for all of us to grow and make things better. And Cynthia, I'm glad that you said that you know that where my heart is because, you know, my heart has always been for the students of Brockton and to make this year better than last year and next year better than this year, no matter what. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minichello. Any additional questions for Renee? Mark, please.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank you for the meeting that, that we had. We sat and had coffee for which would, I'd said I wanted to do with you some time ago, we finally made that happen, you know, and we met for, for quite a bit. And, and, you know, I really appreciate everything you're doing, and also personally, I appreciated that meeting, you know, as you, as you know, we had some conversation about many different things, but, but you shared some things with me that really stuck with me. I mean, that night, I went home and was talking to my wife about it like you wouldn't believe, and they would, you know, and I, it really was, you know, eye-opening for me, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I know you mentioned and I've heard there's some concerns from some folks, and I would say that, you know, I think I benefited more from listening and being open to, and being open-minded and listening and, you know, so I just wanted to, to thank you for your time individually with me, and thank you for all the work that you're doing here in the district.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Any additional questions at this time? As always, thank you very much.
Thanks, Renee, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to welcome our good friend, Lynda Cahill is with us, Director of Nursing and former head of the Board of Health. She's going to give us an update on the DESE COVID-19 testing program. So Lynda, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for inviting me, I much appreciate it. For those that don't know me, my name's Lynda Cahill, I'm the supervisor of nurses, and I truly appreciate the folks that spoke today, the visitors, that really, it broke my heart. So, I'm here to talk, I, I want to talk briefly about our kids because our kids are our future. I'm vested, I am Brockton-born and raised, my kids grew up in Brockton, they went through the school system, I am truly invested in our children. So I want to talk about the medical issues real quick of our kids in the system so you know what's going on in Brockton, the medical piece. So for the medical piece, I'm going to give you just a few statistics, I'm all about the numbers always. So right off the top of my head, we have like 2,500 asthmatics, we have 42 insulin-dependent diabetics, we have 43 children with sickle cell disease, we have children with life-threatening allergies, we have about 300 kids with life-threatening allergies, and I have no idea how many adults we have because they don't have to give us that information, we're glad to get it. So that's just the medical piece. I also want to tell you, I got to figure out this thing here. So Ethan, I'm going to call on you if I can't.
Ethan, put in for a new, go to Ethan's.
Oh, gosh, is this the right one?
Need a new one for this.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay. So Dr. Herman was kind enough to send me this early, but I, I want to go back to, to the nursing piece. So not only are nurses dealing with all these medical issues, now we have COVID on top of it, last year and this year. So our students are all in and they have to deal with COVID on top of it. So our nurses are our heroes, I'm, I'm so happy they show up every day, we're adding more nursing, thank you everyone for adding more nursing help to, to deal with this pandemic. So our cases today, there's four new cases, yesterday there were nine, over the weekend it was like 18. I watch the data every day, I'm not, I'm obsessed about it and I, I know I'm trying to not be, but it's there. So we have 186 current cases, we're in the yellow now if we are going by the color-coded status, I'm glad we're getting better. So I was asked to show cases per school for students and staff. So you can see on the board, we have, at the lower levels, preschool, we just have one student case, and this is since September 2nd. Staff, there were two, elementary level, 58 for students, eight for staff, K to 8, eight students and one staff. Middle school, 29 students, four staff cases. Alternative high school, we have three student cases, two staff, the day rehab, we have one student case and two staff, and the central office, we had three staff. Okay, and this is just a graph, and as you see, it just makes sense, the elementary, the blue is the student cases and the orange is the staff. So at the elementary level, there are more students than staff that have COVID, and that's because they're not vaccinated yet. So kids under 12 cannot get vaccine yet, and hopefully that'll come soon, hopefully in the next few months. Okay, so, I answer this question daily, I educate staff, students, I just want to show this to you because the four major symptoms, if you have any of those four major symptoms, fever, over 100, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, muscle aches or body aches, you have to get tested for COVID. If you have two of the minor, which are coughs or throat, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache in combination with other symptoms, fatigue in combination with other symptoms, nasal congestion, or runny nose. A lot of our students have allergies and asthma, so we have to, the nurse has to assess, is it related, does this child have allergies to begin with, does this child have migraines to begin with? So, again, we encourage testing for the four major and two of the minor. So the testing, we have a new testing in, in Brockton that we just started last week. If you're symptomatic, test as soon as possible, that goes for students and staff. If you're close contact, test on the day five or later after exposure, and you can return on day eight if no symptoms. If positive, you stay out for a minimum of 10 days and you may return if symptoms are improving. So, we review this time and time again. Close contact definition in the school system is if you're within three feet of a COVID-positive case with an individual for 15 minutes or more during a 24-hour period. And please note that 20, 48 hours prior to your symptoms starting, that's when you are infectious as well. So the nurses have to count to two days before. If you're, you have no symptoms but you have a positive test, it's two days before the positive test, and you have to isolate. So this is just a piece of the letter that goes home to family members. So the test and stay program we now have, students can sign up for that and staff can sign up for it as well. And it's right on the website, you just open it up and it says test and stay, you click on it, you get, it gets hooked into a link, and if you go through their link, it's instantaneous that you're, you're registered. We still have paper consents in the schools, they're in four languages, so if a family has difficulty with a computer, we can give them a paper consent. So if a kid is a close contact and the parent signs or guardian signs off for the test and stay program, they can test on day, that first day, test five and stay program, they can test on day, that first day, test five more, up to five days, and stay in school if they have no symptoms. If they develop any symptoms, they have to go home. So, if we have a family member that, if you have a student that tests and on the outside, they can return on day eight, again, if they have no symptoms. But we continue to monitor the symptoms for 14 days. If a family refuses to test, then they have to stay out for 11 days. And then the 14 days of strict quarantine is, for instance, a student that might not be able to wear a mask or might not be able to stay away from other children, say, for instance, if, you know, they had special health care needs or if they were a student with special needs. So, as we all know, COVID's worldwide, and it's a multi-pronged approach in order to get this under control. And I think in this city, we're doing a pretty good job of it. Mayor's Office, community partners. So, as far as mitigating strategies, it's prompt contact tracing. So, the school nurses work in conjunction with the local Board of Health, and also we have contact traces from the state. There are CTC, which stands for Community Tracing Collaborative. So, if the Board of Health can't reach a case during the day, they'll send it off to CTC. And they have a huge group of folks that make phone calls to try to reach these families and tell them, okay, you know, you need to isolate and quarantine. The other, one other, we also do testing. So, I'm glad we started this in Brockton. It's another layer of protection for our students and our families and our staff. So, we're encouraging people to sign up for our testing program. Also vaccination. So, we encourage vaccination. We know it's a person's right to be vaccinated, but we encourage it. And mask wearing while indoors and social distancing. So, the prompt contact tracing, like I spoke about, it's in collaboration with the local Board of Health and CTC and the school nurses. And not only, every day, I look in Maven, which is the statewide database, and I let the nurses know if there's a positive case in their school. I also let the principal know. And in turn, I've asked the nurses to let me know if they hear of a family member or staff member that says, oh, I know of a positive case. And that way, we can track them. We also have to report this to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education every single day, well, per week, but I do it every day, just so I don't forget. And so, we're trying to keep on top of it. So, here's school staff responsibility. Seeding charts, when there's a positive case, for the most part, you know, everybody's three feet, so everybody's doing a good job staying three feet. The issue has become, when the kids are at lunch, we want to discourage congregating. I know the kids want to be with each other, but we want to discourage congregating, because that's how it's spread. Wearing masks while indoors, using appropriate letters for notification, and, you know, the spacing. So, things that you need to know, you don't have to quarantine if you've been vaccinated if you don't have symptoms. If you have symptoms, then you should get tested. You don't have to quarantine if you've had COVID within the last 90 days. You don't have to quarantine if you've had contact while outdoors, if people weren't within the three feet in 15 minutes. And again, I keep stressing, if symptomatic, get tested. So, the CIC is the agency that's helping us with the testing. It stands for Cambridge Innovation Center Testing Agency. And they go to each school every day for the test and stay program, for the symptomatic, and also the safety checks that are weekly. So, I'm going to go through each one. So, we have symptomatic testing. Kids that become symptomatic while they're in school can go down to be tested. I notify, Charlotte Gately is our person that we, is the, our district program coordinator. And if I, if we have symptomatic kids in school, or if you have kids that are on the test and stay program, they'll go out to the schools and test them. They're not there the full six, seven hours. They're there for a timeframe. And then we have the, well, it was called pool testing, but they're calling it safety checks now. So, that's weekly. And there's a certain timeframe each week that this group goes out. And I converse with Charlotte twice a day in the morning to see where they have to go. There's a schedule. But if they have to go, if kids just develop symptoms, then they'll go after they're done with their task to whatever particular school is. So, the symptomatic testing, there is no verbal consents. There's electronic ones, and we have paper. I put the link in there, but it's on our website. The students will be tested in the medical waiting room. Symptomatic staff, an MOA just went out with a BEA this afternoon, correct? And so, if we can get the CIC team out to the school, I need to be notified right away if there's a symptomatic staff that gets sick while they're in school. I need to be notified right away, so they can get to that school and test. And then there's also testing locations outside of school, CVS, Walgreens, Massasoit's still doing it. Massasoit's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 7 to 11. Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday is 2 to 7. And that's just drive-through. You don't need an appointment. You get your results in 24 hours from that site. Enabled Health Center does them, does testing as well. Test and stay, identify close contacts, sign permission. They test every day for five days. If it's over a weekend, depending on exposure, then they'll come back on Monday. Say, for instance, the exposure was on Wednesday, they'll do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, come back on Monday, Tuesday. Safety checks are once a week, so you can sign up for the safety checks once a week. I myself am signed up for these. Any positive pools will be verified with a binax now the next day. We get notifications by email, you know, if we have a positive pool. So, this is the update since this past week. This is the amount of students signed up, 1,151. Staff signed up, 612. Total tested so far, 232. This is data from yesterday. I didn't get the numbers today. Biggest challenge for me anyways is the technology. I keep getting bumped out of the, crushed the curve. I can see all the consents, but the results, I'm having trouble with. I'll get an email, but I have to call the coordinator, say, hey, you need to tell me who's positive. So far, we've only had two true new positives this week. I think it's great. We had a couple of kids that the parents had signed up, and they were positive for COVID. So, they, of course, they tested positive, the result was positive. So, two new ones that were true. So, vaccination is one of the other modalities that's going to help in the fight of COVID. So, the staff that was surveyed, we had 1,268 responded, 1,232 were vaccinated. We're still gathering data on the students, and that's going to be an arduous task, only because of, we have an electronic health database, which is interfaced with the MIS, which stands for Massachusetts Immunization Information System. And it does sync with it, but we have to sync it manually, student by student by student. So, there's 15,000 students, and we haven't had the time to do this yet. We're trying, but there's just so many other things that the nurses have to attend to. So, if I'd have to estimate, I think we probably have about 1,000 students vaccinated so far. You can find a vaccine. You can just Google it, you know, Google, find a vaccine, and you put in your zip code, and it'll tell you where you can get a vaccine. We're having a clinic at a football game, October 30th. We're hoping to plan more clinics in the future with the Board of Health and the Mayor's Office and DPH. And so, my message for staff and parents, please stay home if you're sick. Please stay home if you're awaiting a test result. Don't send your kid to school if you have not gotten your test result. And if you have family members that are positive, please test the whole household. And I think that's it. Let me just see. Yep, that's it.
Lynda, could you go back to the cases that we've been reported since the start of the school year?
Sure.
I think it's the second slide. So, basis has been 120 student cases and 26 staff cases since the start of the school year. So, this is where I actually want to commend the school committee for the effort, the money we put in with the ESER I, ESER II funding. I mean, we have 20,000 people in the school district, 20,000 when you count close to 16,000 students and then 5,000, almost 5, we'll dispel 3,000 staff members. So, you know, obviously, we're getting close to, you know, 19,000 people that work in the school system. So, that's a testament to the supplies you bought, the air purifiers, the sanitizing, you know, spray guns, a testament to the administrators, the teachers in the, in the school, the students wearing their masks, following the guidelines. I mean, I've spoken to, it's a small high school. A friend of mine works at a small vocational school, and it's west of here. And there are up over 200 cases, and the school has about 600 kids in it. So, I just want to say that the teachers, the staff, the students wearing their masks, following the directions, sanitizing, you know, the staff, the custodians, you know, Dr. Cobb's and his team, I mean, they really, I mean, we don't want to see any cases, but we know there are going to be cases in school. We just, that's, this is the life we're living now. But, you know, for the numbers that we have, that's a pretty, and Lynda, your staff and the nursing staff are always being on top of things. You know, I have to commend you, your staff, and really everyone for, it's pretty amazing that the numbers are this low. Again, I know it's not, we want zero, but that's not realistic. But this is, with us being back in school full-time, you know, it's, the numbers are, I would say, pretty, you know, really good for...
Yeah. Reasonably well.
You know, people are doing a really good job of, you know, social distancing, wearing their masks, and the PPE that we've provided through, again, you allocating the money. It's, you know, all those things working together have kept the cases down. And as we move forward and continue with vaccine clinics, and then when, you know, when they approve the Pfizer vaccine for under 12, you know, we'll see, you know, things get even better. So, it's really positive.
It is very positive. Thank you, everyone. Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Lynda. Sorry, I'm going to try to talk a little louder. So, the past couple of weeks, you and I have been going back and forth, because I've had a few constituents reach out to me, because there was a little bit of confusion about the whole, you know, direct contact. So, and I tried to explain to the parents and family members, during the day, we do our best, masks, distancing as much as we can. It's afterwards. Once they leave our, you know, our property, we can't control what happens. So, I know a lot of parents were concerned why they weren't getting phone calls, because, you know, they, they thought their child was a direct contact. But because they do have the masks on during the day, that's why they were not notified. So, I mean, if, that's one area, if you can just, I know you touched base with that in one of the slides, because parents just think if there's a positive case, they should be getting a phone call. But they're not going to, because it wasn't a direct contact.
So, another thing that I've discussed with the nurses is to, you know, could you find out if this child is an extended day? And also, any of the Boys and Girls Clubs, because they need to be notified as well. And also too, speaking to the nurses, if your kid is a close contact on the outside, please notify the families that, you know, your kids are playing with other children and, you know, it should be known that if, you know, your child is sick, please let another parent know that they were close contact of another child. So...
And my other question is, is I know we had discussed the test and stay. Is there, what can we do to help you? We're at 1,151 students. So, what can we do as far as our district, you know, that's really low, given the number of students that we have.
It is.
So, given, you know, I know we have a lot of students under the age of 12, but 1,151, you know, this is free. It's something that we just...
Can we put it on Facebook and Instagram and whatever we have? Just, yep.
I mean...
Who is that? The link is on our homepage. Test and stay consent. Yeah, and we'll text it out again.
Yep. And I mean, that's going to give parents, well, families, a little more security during the winter time, especially if their child's getting tested on a regular basis. You know, if they do end up getting the virus, at least they'll get, you know, a lot of, a lot of times, people have the virus and they just don't have any symptoms. So, I think in that situation, you know, we are helping out the families. So, I mean, we can all share it on our, nowadays, it's Instagram, Facebook, just getting the word out, definitely.
We have Twitter too, right?
No more Twitter. Oh, Twitter, yes. I thought you meant TikTok.
No, Twitter.
No TikToking for us.
No, we don't like TikTok.
Twitter and Instagram and Facebook. So, we can all share it. We definitely want that number to grow.
Yes, we do.
Definitely.
Yes. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, if I could just, I want to thank Dr. Cahill again. Lynda Cahill is really just a skilled professional. She cares, right? And I also want to thank the school nurses, because if we think back in time, Board of Health had one nurse when I became mayor, and we weren't sure how to even do contact tracing. So, Lynda stepped up with her team, and they continue to help. Every Saturday, we're doing a Board of Health clinic right now. Right now, we're about 75% of our population with at least one shot in their arm. 12% of our population can't get the shot, because they're under the age of 11, so under the age of 12. So, we're doing okay, but we need to continue to do better. Between the efforts of Lynda and Dr. Rick Herman, who will appear at the next school committee meeting as well, and Dr. Eno Montes here, you know, we're doing what we need to do to be safe. But I just also want to let you know that DPH has decided, and the state's decided, that the Shaw Center will be a regional location now, regional, not just Brockton, for the booster shots. And that's going to start, might be this Friday, but it might be right after the holiday on Monday. So, you know, just wanted to thank you, Lynda, personally, for what you do every day and your team.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome, everyone. All right. I don't know what else to ask. Yep.
So, I'm going to give you a quick October 1st enrollment update. So, right now, as of October 1st, obviously, which was last Friday, we were at 15,587 students. On October 1st last year, we were at 15,593. So, that's six students below where we were last October 1st, which is actually really good news, because we feared that we'd be losing, you know, a lot of urban districts lost 500, 1,000 students. Right now, we've lost six. We could easily end up getting more than that, because the October 1st number is, has to kind of, was something going on in the back that we... Cheryl, can you ask them to step outside, please?
Socks are up, 3-0, bottom of the fourth, so that's good news.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, for filling, that's what you call filling, filling...
Evil empire is going to lose tonight.
Filling ear time.
Yeah, why not? What the hell?
All right. So, we're six students off of last year's pace. So, you know, basically, that's good news, because as Ethan said, when they, when the numbers kind of, this is not the solid October 1st number that the state's going to go off of. It could be, could be 100 to 150 more. It might be 30 less, once the numbers play out. But anyway, we're not losing, you know, the good news is we're not going to be losing a big chunk of Chapter 70 money, because our numbers are really low. And a big reason for that is your support of the virtual school, even though it's been very difficult to get it off the ground. That's 400 students that I believe would have went on to online programs, those K to 12 programs you see advertised, you know, we would have, you know, even if, even if we kept 200 of those kids, you're still losing about 2, you know, 200. A lot of those students that are there, their parents were steadfast, they did not want them in person. So, I do believe most of those students would have went off to those online schools. So, it really helped with our enrollment. And again, this is all about funding and...
And again, this is all about funding and not losing any funding for our students and teachers. It's, so it's a good, it's a good thing. So we'll have the updated number that, Al, when do we usually get that, the final number the state uses?
Final number the state uses will be about in January, 27th.
Oh, all right.
They'll have all the charter school kids that are sent to Brockton, a lot of with school choice in and out.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that's a quick enrollment October 1st, I wanted to give that update.
Thank you, Superintendent. I appreciate that. Any questions on that? We'll move on. Oh, Mr. Sullivan.
I was just wondering, Mr. Thomas, do any Afghans stand to show up at the door?
I haven't, I'd have to check with Masia. I don't believe so. We have seen, we've seen people come in from Ecuador. We also have seen people come in from Haiti. So again, we take, we take everybody that comes to this parent information center to make sure they are registered. It's public school. They're all welcome to come.
Oh, I know.
Exactly, but I haven't, we haven't seen a big number.
I was just wondering.
We haven't seen that big number yet.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you again, Mike. We'll move on. We already did refer an item to subcommittee. Thank you again, Tim, for setting that date. Any other matters? Mr. D'Agostino?
Yeah, I do want to have a policy subcommittee. I was thinking, I'd like to, I think our next full committee meeting will be the 19th, maybe if we did 5:30 that night, maybe I'd be able to bring out the back news that I want to make sure that everybody's aware of. You know, you have that whole evening, I want to be out hard stop like the last night and have the, you know, important things. So with the 19th, 5:30 before the next full committee meeting, more for everybody with policy.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other matters on that? No, we'll move on then. Unfinished business, any unfinished business, agenda item five? None? We'll move on. Six new visits.
So new visits, businesses, vocational admissions, the rationale, we have to take a vote on the BHS career tech admissions policy. So this is beginning this year. The career vocational technical education schools programs, the school committees now must annually approve any selective criteria to be used in admissions and review the district's vocational admissions policy. This is a standard procedure that all school committees in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have to follow. This document that we sent out on Friday has been slightly modified to include an updated department name, the move from paper applications to online applications, and obviously the updated BPS logo. There has been no radical changes from the previous school, the previous policy that you approved, I believe it was two years ago. So we're just looking for a vote on that.
entertain a motion relative to what Superintendent just articulated? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, it was properly seconded by Ms. Azak. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. In favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Hereby passes. Any other matters before us? Just to remind all the school committee members that we actually have an esteemed mayor coming to visit Brockton tomorrow from the country of Honduras. He was just out in LA and he's coming to Brockton tomorrow. So I know my office had sent out emails, but if anybody's around, it's 11 to 12 tomorrow outside of City Hall. And one other thing that we did today at the Wall Memorial, we recognize Purple Heart recipients, those living and those that have passed from the city of Brockton, through the efforts of Dave Farrell and support of my office. Brockton was designated today a Purple Heart community, which is a long time coming. So it was a great event. We're going to have future events because not every Brockton resident that has received a Purple Heart would have been recognized today. We're compiling a list. If you know of any resident either alive or has passed, please call my office, I'll call Dave Farrell, because we are going to be doing this on a regular basis. But I just wanted to share that. It was a wonderful day in the city of Brockton. Anything else before us? entertain a motion, adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. All favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Have a good night, drive careful.